Good morning, and thank you for tuning in to this special called meeting of the Pender County Board of Education. It has been determined that we do have a quorum today, and at this point, the meeting is now called to order. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the agenda? And would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
This is Don, I will make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Jennifer Hansen, I second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hansen. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, and the agenda has been adopted. Number three on our agenda is consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda up for discussion? Or if not, you can go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I make a motion we approve it, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Do we have a second?
Jennifer Hansen, second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And it has passed unanimously. All right, number four, J. H. Lee, project manager, RFP presentations, Mr. Taylor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. We have three presenters for the project management services for the J. H. Lee Elementary and Middle School. The first presentation will be by the coming group.
Good morning, gentlemen.
How are you guys?
Doing well, and you?
Good. We're actually waiting for one more, but we're happy to go ahead and get started, and you know, if we gotta carry through his part, we'll do it. If that's fine with you guys.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, we have some copies of our presentation and kind of a placemat that we'll leave with you. If you guys are ready, we'll just jump right in. So, thank you, first of all, for giving us the opportunity. We appreciate the chance to present our qualifications to you. My name is Chris Whitley. I'm with a vice president with Coming Group. I've been with Coming Group over 25 years. With me today, I have Mina Marcos, and Brian Roof is who we're waiting on. I apologize for that. We thought we were 9:30 this morning, but...
You were 9:30, sir. We just happened to process the beginning of the agenda a little quicker than...
That works for us. That works for us. We'll get through it. So, but in addition to the three of us, you know, we have a deep bench of project managers, cost managers, risk managers that we have availability to pull in as would be necessary for this project. So, I guess, just a quick agenda. We're gonna talk to you a little bit about who Coming Group is as a company, and then we'll kind of talk about our project approach, and then we'll kind of close it out with what we think are our key differentiators, and then obviously give you a chance to ask some questions. So, Coming Group, we've been in business about 28 years, so a little caveat to that is in the Carolinas. We started as Southern Management Group, a good portion of us, and we merged with Coming Group. So, we've actually been doing K-12 construction in the Carolinas since 1989. And that core group of guys, me included, Jeff Holstein, who was here previously when we were gonna give the presentation, he couldn't make it today. We were both with Southern Management Group and have been, you know, doing K-12 education for a long time here in the Carolinas. But now, with Coming Group, 28 years' experience, over 2,500 employees globally. You know, we have 63 local project team members, to include cost managers, project managers, schedulers, those sorts of folks. It's in terms of pure-play agency construction management, which is what this job entails, where we purely represent the owner. We, by volume, we're the number-one firm nationally in the United States at doing that. You know, we don't have, we don't do general contracting. We don't do anything else but purely represent owners like yourselves. We'll serve this project out of our Raleigh office. We also have offices in Columbia and Charleston. Those are our three main Carolina offices and where this will be served from. Our local presence, again, we have over 50 project managers in the Carolinas that we have access to, eight cost managers, five schedulers. We've worked with a lot of clients, very similar to yourselves, Wake County Public Schools, Durham Public Schools, Charleston County School District, just a lot of local K-12 clients that we've worked with over the years. And again, this just represents that. Wake County Public Schools, Durham, we've worked in Wake for the last 10 years. Durham, we've worked on and off with them for probably the last 17 or 18 years. Charleston County School District, we've been working there for over 25 years, kind of continuously, as they do, continue to do building programs. And then these along the bottom are just similar-sized school districts that we've also worked in, Richmond One, Lexington Two, and Fort Mill. Similar peer-type school districts to yourselves. And this is where I would be kicking it off to Brian Roof, who probably would be, do a lot better job on these slides than I will. But this project is unique, we think, because, number one, it's design build, which is a little different for K-12 education in the Carolinas. It's also unique in the fact that you're bringing in, this, here's Brian Roof right now. I'll let him introduce himself and jump, but let me finish that part. It's unique also because, you know, you're bringing in your owner, project manager, while construction is started. So, that's a little different, and we'll talk about later how we've done that before successfully for some other clients. But I'll let Brian jump in with the approach.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Brian Roof, project executive with Coming Group. Been with Coming for over seven years now, based out of Raleigh. So, glad we got started early. That's great. That's a great sign. So, a couple of things I wanted to touch on as part of our presentation today and communicate out to the team is really the importance of the onboarding and the transition process for bringing on your owner rep. As Chris was mentioning, this is a key phase of the project, and it really does set up the project either for success or for challenges down the road, how well this is executed. So, while it happens pretty quickly, and a lot of times can get glossed over, we take a little bit of time to talk about the importance of this phase. In particular, understanding the stakeholders, mapping out that process of stakeholder engagement to make sure we have the right people in the room at the right time, making the right influence and input for the right decisions later. The other, a couple of other important items on this is the integration into the existing team. We've worked with the architect, we've worked with contractors, so we're very familiar with that team. And understanding how we're going to behave and act with one another, representing you and your best interests is really important, is kind of set those guidelines. We'll talk about a project charter, kind of what that looks like, and defining success early, and then measuring all of those standards of success throughout the process. And the last thing is just aligning the project goals and success, which I mentioned a little bit about the project charter, and setting those very early. The transition piece construction, my colleague, Mina, will talk about a little bit more here in just a moment. Let's go ahead to the next slide. So, what I wanted to draw your attention to was some of the key elements, the critical aspects of that onboarding, the first 30 days. I won't go through all this with you, but I do wanna hit on a couple of highlights. So, understanding the stakeholder and the stakeholder engagement, as I mentioned previously, that's really critical. If you don't have the right people in the room at the right times, you'll either miss some issues or some important aspects, or you may end up going back and unwinding some of the decisions and influence that happened. That just adds extra time, extra costs, and extra pressure to the project. So, it's important to get that stakeholder engagement and map very early on. Another thing that's important to us is creating a communication plan. I know that sounds simple, but understanding what information needs to go where, and how that's gonna move from the team out and from outwards back to the team is really important. If you don't find, define that communication plan very early, again, it can be a struggle throughout the entire process. Moving forward a little bit into week two and week three, we talk about setting up the project controls. Again, a very critical step early on in the project. What are we setting up in terms of the schedule? What are we setting up in terms of the budget? We want to make sure that we help you design to a budget. As often as we want certain elements and critical aspects of a project, knowing how to help the team design to a budget keeps us out of trouble. So, it's like the discard rails on the road. The project, establishing the project tools, and some of that deep forensic review of the schedule is gonna be really important for the milestones, and not just for the project, but also how the board wants to be engaged, how the community and the public want to be engaged. It's important that we define those in the schedule, because there's times where we need to allow enough time for that information to go through the committees, to go through the stakeholders, and ultimately come to the Board of Education and to come to some of those decision-making points, and to give the project enough time to do that, get input, and still move forward. And then week three and week four, a couple of final things I'll touch on is validating the scope and defining those deliverable for owner reporting and expectations. What is important to you as the leadership? What's important to your community members? What do they need to see and hear in terms of reporting to stay informed? That way, they're not surprised. That way, issues when they do come up, they're handled proactively and not in a reactive fashion. We're not putting anybody in a reactive position with this project, and that's really important from a communication standpoint. It goes much further than just the project team. So, establishing all of that within the first 30 days really becomes how you point the needle of your compass in the right direction to manage this project well and to support you. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, Mina, and talk a little bit more about the project approach, a little further down the line.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Mina Marcos, project manager with Coming Group. I've been with Coming Group for, since 2021, in the start of 2021, and I've got about 14 years of combined school experience, coming from the Northeast as well. So, all right. So, the next two approaches, the construction, the closeout, and post-construction are just as critical, as Brian mentioned. And as we're going through, maybe just ask yourself, how are we approaching these activities? And so, proactively managing our GCs and the design team, just through our OEC meetings, coming up prepared, showing up with our agendas, staying ahead of the tasks that are on the agendas, and then just follow up immediately right after, so that we're not waiting from, till the end of the week before we get to our next OEC meeting, where we're trying to follow up and make up our time. Our quality assurance program, looking at our best practices, knowing our resources and knowing how to manage them on the project, conforming to contract documents. One of the best examples is maybe when we're reviewing our change orders, is actually citing from the contracts so that we kind of learn how to execute the contract well and stay within the budget and the schedule of our projects. Looking at budget monitoring, one of the items is obviously reviewing our payoffs and our change orders, but a really good tool is using our cash flow to know what we've expended so far and what remains to be expended, and tying that to our schedule and looking at our schedule management. So, we discuss schedule at our project OECs every week. Then typically, once a month, what we'll do is we'll have a scheduled meeting with the CM and design team to go through our critical path activities, look at our floats and the schedule, mitigate any risks that come out of those negative float activities. Proactive reporting, in a couple of slides here, I'll show you one of our executive summary reports that we provide for one of our clients, and it kind of just gives a quick overview of the project status, and I think it's very helpful for them when they give us some of their feedback and what they wanna see. Looking at building, commissioning, making sure our consultants are on top of their activities when we start out with testing and our pre-functional checklists, completing those checklists, doing our testing and balancing, getting us to commissioning and then post-commissioning and building occupancy. And then finally, as our closeout documentations, there's a slide that I'll highlight here as well. And then moving into post-construction, so just ensuring all of our operation maintenance manuals are in place and are ready to be turned over, all our ass-built drawings. We do a year-end walkthrough and just make sure we follow up that warranty walkthrough again with a follow-up at the very end. All right, so, just a quick sample of our project management, again, looking at our schedules. This is using P6, if that's available, and that's what we'll use to manage the project. And then this is our project reporting tool. Five quick sections, the top left, just kind of quick contract milestones that give you that quick review of what's coming up as our project moves and progresses along. The bottom left is our status, which is just a quick verbiage of what activities are actually happening on that project at that time, for you to keep up with. Top right is just some data, our budget for the project, some building square footage and acreage of the site and what the enrollment numbers are. The middle section's our estimate. That comes very useful when we're doing design in a project, and we're looking at our budget, and then whether it's bidding or the phases before, and looking at our estimates and what that delta is, and it just gives us a quick pulse of our projects as we progress. And then the bottom right section is our contracts that we have with the design team and the CM team, and tracking their change orders and what those values are as we progress on that project. All right, and the last thing's our closeout phase. So, one of the big things that I usually like to highlight is that this project closeout phase, even though it's called closeout, it really just should start at the very beginning of a project, and it's really getting all of our documents in place from the start of the project and maintaining that project documentation as we progress, so that when we get to the project closeout, everything's ready and it's in place, and we don't have to spend a year or two collecting this and actually dragging out that closeout phase. And it really should take about three to four months to close out that project. So, it is a challenging phase, and obviously strong leadership, and just ensuring and staying on top of our design and CM teams to get all that documentation in place plays a big part here. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Thank you. Just one more thing to do on the project closeout. Yep, the project's 95% done, right? But, and that 95% could have went incredibly well, but if you drop the ball on the closeout to get the punch list done, oh, and in manuals, it can sour a project as a whole if you're not, if you don't stay on top of that. So, we have a process that we've used successfully throughout many projects to help make sure that goes smoothly. Relevant experience, we talked about a little bit earlier that, you know, this is a little bit of a new project, whether it be a design build, and then also the timing that you bring us in. So, we just brought up two recent projects that we've done. One was for Charleston County School District, Carolina Park Elementary. That was a design-build project that we've recently completed for Charleston County School District, so very similar to the project you have here. And then on the right is the International African-American Museum for the City of Charleston. They got into construction and felt like they needed to bring in somebody to kind of support their staff and look after their interests to bring that thing successfully in, and we did that. So, we're very proud of that project as well. So, by Coming Group, first, we're 100% owner representatives. We don't, you know, we have licensed architects, engineers, contractors, all on staff, but we don't choose to do any of that work. We choose to only represent the owner's best interest in every project that we do. We have the K-12 experience. As you saw in some of the other slides, we've done over 500 K-12 projects in the Carolinas. We have a demonstrated process. We've been through projects very similar to yours, whether it be design, build, or coming in midway through. We've done that before, so we have a proven process to get us through, to get us started and make sure we successfully complete the project. And then we take a collaborative project approach. So, when we get into a project, should we be fortunate enough to be selected? We want to become an extension of your staff. We don't want, you know, in terms of everyone else, that we want them to think we're just Pender County employees. They're representing you. That's the way we look at it. We kind of build each project like it's our own, so that's really the mentality that we take, and we just wanna have a great working relationship with whoever our owners are and just integrate well with their staff. And with that, we'll open it up for any questions. Absolutely, yep, yep.
I know you answered the two questions I had, which were, have you worked with our contractor? And have you started sort of, I'll call it midway through the project before, and so I appreciate your answer on those.
Yes, ma'am.
Give me, give me an example of a change order.
So, I mean, a change order can be anything from unforeseen conditions, unsuitable soils you may hit while digging foundations or putting a roadway in, to, you know, a design, a change order that comes out of a design flaw or a design mistake.
Okay, that's my question. Then how come that, does that, does that become the architect's problem?
Often times, it very well could. It depends on the nature of, everything's unique, right? But we're certainly, we've certainly gone down the road on numerous occasions where, you know, you can go against the architect's arrow and emission insurance if it's a big mistake, and you certainly have plenty of avenues to make that the architect's problem, like depending on the actual circumstances.
Like mechanical or electrical or any of those design flaws?
Yes, sir.
You would, it would be the architect's problem, or you would go after the architect.
That's right. That's right.
I got one more question before I forget. So, on, let's say that they missed something big on mechanical. Do you have a contractor ready that's bonded and insured that can go in and take care of that change order rather than getting raped by the contractor already on site? That's, I've seen that before. That's my question.
Yeah, we certainly have great relationships with all contractors. Now, those kind of situations, I'm assuming that this project is bonded, right? So, a lot of times, that may be your first avenue with us dealing with the contractor's bonding company. But if it's an emergency situation, say, you know, you're without air conditioning in August, and the contractor's not responding, we can certainly, you know, reach out to our contacts and whatever, MHVAC, mechanical field, and get somebody in here that can address it. So, yes...
So, you've got people in place that can...
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Brian, you can...
I would, I would just say, those kind of situations, most of the time, in my opinion, should be and could be avoided. But it's having that strong partner with you to help avoid those kind of issues. That's, that's more of a reactive situation that I think we can help stay out. And what I mean by that is, we've supported school districts where we're at the 11th hour, and it's clear the contractor's not going to make it. So, we've supplemented resources and brought in teams to help them get across that finish line. However, I also think with the right proactive engagement early on, you can see, we can, we identify through the risk register where we're starting to see issues and begin to deal with them early on, so we can avoid that exact situation later.
So, the question of avoidance is the best.
Yeah, that's, yeah, trying to avoid that. But, yeah, I don't wanna be, I don't have us taking advantage of a contractor already on site going, we have to move this one wall and get charges astronaut.
Well, and I think, in your situation, with this being a design-build project that's underway, you guys at least are doing the smart thing by hiring a third party to come represent you, right? And, you know, should there be a big change order or something like that come through, we have cost experts in the Carolinas that are used to the cost of the work in, you know, North Carolina that can make sure that we're getting right priced on those things, and I can promise you, every one of us have sat across the table with a contractor arguing costs when it comes to change orders, and we will certainly do that on your behalf.
Seems like with your project reporting, and you're, I'm assuming you're used to the, and I'll say it wrong, Oculus?
He was telling us about it earlier, that we have seen it before, but that's not something that we've participated in. But, I mean, it's certainly a neat technology.
Right. We should be able to avoid some of those change orders, I mean, I don't think.
That's right. Well, and even more so than that, it's the presence of a project manager, third set of eyes on the project weekly, whatever cadence you guys come up with that you would like us there. But, you know, we, personally, I think we will get more out of that being on site, you know, on a regular cadence to pick up on those things, more so than that.
And would a project manager be on site every day?
I mean, that's 100% up to you. So, you know, we, should we be fortunate enough to be selected, we'll sit down with your team and decide what makes sense for this project. Certainly, if you guys want somebody every day, we can provide that. If we think, you know, twice a week or three times a week makes more sense, we can certainly do that as well.
I think having, you know, maybe not necessarily a PM on the site all the time, you would definitely need a super, a safety and a QC, is what I would recommend. You know, the PM, he can pop in and out, and the super's gonna relay what's going on to him anyway. And then when they go through their schedule, they'll start foreseeing these things, if they need a change order, or how can they minimize it, or if it was just something completely unforeseen, and then they'll back up and they'll have that discussion, they'll consult with us, and we'll move forward.
Any other questions?
Don't have any. Thank you.
No. Enjoyed your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Yeah, start early, finish on time. That's great. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Peter Lee, on my end? Yes.
I know nothing bad of them. Second group is MVP, and I'm not sure they would be here yet, but I will check. They were scheduled for 9:30, 10:00, and 10:30, I think because we thought the beginning of the meeting would take longer, but... We have to wait. Just going through the agenda and...
That would be a good question.
Mr. McPherson, since we are waiting for scheduled presentations, what would be your suggestion right now? Should we go ahead and possibly do a closed session while we're waiting for them? Because apparently, they're probably not gonna be here for another 30 minutes.
I think you can table, put this table it for 30 minutes to come back at 10 o'clock, and then address, move on to the rest of your agenda.
Would that require a motion from the board, or could I just, okay.
Yes.
Okay, we have a solution. We could take a motion and a second to table, go ahead and to our closed agenda, and come back whenever the presenters are ready. Okay, so, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Bobby. Do we have a second?
Did you say you need a motion, closed session?
Not a motion for close, well, we will need that, but right now, we're making a motion to table the presentations.
Oh, yeah. All right, gotcha.
And then I'll have a, then we'll come to it. Okay, so, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Aye.
I second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, he just walked.
Aye.
Okay, and we just had the second group of presenters come in after we tabled it. Okay, Mr. McPherson, how can I negate that?
Just bring it back up right now.
Okay. All right, well, it has been tabled, and here we go back into presentation mode, I would assume so. All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor, thank you. Let's proceed.
MVP here to make the second presentation. Jim, I will press it. Pass out the materials.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, good morning, gentlemen. How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good morning.
Doing well. Okay, you can go ahead and start your presentation anytime you're ready.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Wanna tell you how appreciative we are for this opportunity to possibly be part of an impactful project for decades to come in the community, so thank you again for the opportunity. Jim Yatzik unfortunately cannot be here this morning. He had a scheduling conflict, so I am here in his stead. My role would... My role would be as building service line manager. That encompasses all of North Carolina. What my role would be in this, for this project would be to help the team with any resources they need, and to make sure they have those as quickly as possible to keep the project moving forward. Thank you again.
My name is Mike Burris, I'm program manager and do general cost estimating and pre-construction services for the company. Managed school building programs for almost 35 years now. Used to run Wake County schools, now growing other schools, we're showing the presentation, and just wrapped up Pender County, or Bladen County schools, they're part of the school project. My background is mechanical engineering and from North Carolina, been here a long time.
Hi, my name is Ron Rose, and I'll be the construction manager on site for this project. This October will be 51 years I've been in vertical construction, so been around a little bit. And so I do live in Myrtle Beach, so I'm not far away. And I look forward to being here and helping you on this project.
Okay, a little overview of MVP, I'll be quick with this. We were established in 1989. We are local, we have offices in Raleigh and Charlotte, though we have team members spread across the entire state. We, we come at a project as an owner-centric approach. Owners representative services are our core business. We do not do any design, so that gives us a unique perspective and, and unbiased position to provide the, the most accurate information to the client, to, to the board. Education experience, we are, have extensive experience working on K-12 education projects, hundreds and hundreds of schools that have been performed in our portfolio with a large database of lessons learned to pull from. Proven performance, proven performance providing owners representative services are resources. 300-plus construction management managers, subject experts and staff, that's where I would come in and providing those additional resources when and if needed. And also the passion for construction. Number two ranked nationally in the AEC industry as one of the best firms to work for.
A bit of our project experience, and particularly the team that you're going to be working with in this project. I just finished up Bladen County Schools, their K-8 project. It was a CM at Risk project. So Bordeaux was the builder on that one, and really enjoyed working with Ben, your current superintendent you've got out there. One of the, one of the best superintendents and most honest guys I've worked with. And since his kids were going through the school, it was up very well, Ben, it's cool. I'm currently managing Dambler Public Schools. They have three major renovation projects going on up in Dambler, Virginia. They have produced the sales tax proceeds that go along with their casino that they got. And it's funding their school building program finally, after about 45 years of not having anything that they could build. And so they're, all of those schools are opening up this summer, and all of them are on track to, to do that and keep going. And then in Chesterfield County, we've had a long-lasting program, and that's where Jim's at today, is in Chesterfield County with their board, doing their school building programs. But again, it's, we are only school representatives for owners, okay? But we have been contractors, I've run general construction companies, I've managed CM Risk firms. I wrote half the language for the CM Risk bills in the state legislature. So we know what we're talking about, we'll talk about CM Risk or design bill. I'm also a DBIA member. So in this project, the way that it works again is any supplies or knows what we need and, and can draw our resources about it. Our 300 people that we have are amazing, of all of them have tons of experience, and all of them have credentials as long as my own for their history and their past. I've come in as your senior project manager, I help with your board presentations, I'll do the monthly reports for you, through the presentation here at the board. I'll be on site at least, at least two or three times a month. Ron's available whenever you need to work into your contract how you want it, okay? There are different ways than an owner construction. You can either have one day a week and show up, you're fine with that, depending on your budget, or more times a week, because that's what you really need, in order to make sure that the contractor's doing what's in the contract, in the specifications. And because this is a design build project, we need to make sure that what they had under their contract and understanding is really what is delivered. It isn't washed away between the two negotiating something and you don't get the value that you wanted out of it. So again, you've got a unique project, I've watched this project for a long time now, just off to the side, knowing how you're struggling to get properties, knowing how you're struggling to get land. You've got a unique spot that has its challenges with it. And I'm glad to see that, that you've got a good team that's doing it. We've worked with Mosley a lot, and we've worked with Bordeaux a lot, and, and it's just a good team, you'll be, you'll be okay. We're currently working on the schedule, and if that schedule keeps up, you'll be fine. But there are risks associated with that, and we're going to do a little bit of that. You've got a project that's established for it. The main thing that you need to be cognizant of is changes that you may want to do to the design, which can doom a design build project and cost you a lot of extra money. Or you forgot something in your FFNE budget, and somebody's wanting something, somebody's wanting something, somebody's wanting something, and your FFNE budget blows up because you're saying yes. And you need to hold your line to your budget. So again, scheduling risks, you've got long lead items that have been taken care of and addressed by Bordeaux and Shore. They've got things being delivered. Your biggest risk right now for your schedule is weather, and what can happen. As we know what can happen here in Pender County, along the coast, and wipeout projects real quick. You know, Chapel Hill just got wiped out the other day. So that's your biggest risk that you've got. And then changing cost risks. Again, design errors are going to creep up. How the team handles them is their, their prerogative how to handle it, but we need to make sure that they handle it properly. And do so in an effective, meaningful way that meets your design intent that you wanted, not what their budget is going to be. It's your project that you're paying for, you need to get what you paid for. And then again, checking, make sure the allowances and extension seasons and all that work out a lot. And, and I know Ron will be all over it, because that's just the way he is. Very detailed on this project. You have a project management plan that's working right now. You have a series of communications that's working. You, whether you like them or not, that's what we want to hear. Are there changes that you want us to do? Are there changes that you want in the, the information that you're getting presented to? Are there, is there audits or backups that you want to see? You know, outside of the CM or the, or mostly? Just to, just to be sure that we're all on the up and up. And that's, that's what we do. And again, we'll go all the way through that, with the series of scheduling, quality, commissioning, and turnover. All of those will be helping you through that entire process. And again, communications are the key factor. The board wants to know that they're getting their value and what the project is, and they're getting the value of the educational program that's going to be in that school. You want to make sure that the children get everything that they need, and the teachers get what they need, and it operates properly for the next 15 to 20 years before you have to do something major again to the campus, okay? So, making sure that that works is on-site, is Ron's responsibility, making sure to go to that. I follow up with it, I put my own eyes on it, and making sure. I always believe that you've got to put your own eyes and hands on something, make sure that it's right. You don't take somebody's word for it, you do, you go see. And then make sure that if you have other information that you need, like media or social stuff that you need to put out, or website or things like that, we can provide that information for you.
Document management, that's the biggest part of a, a project is making sure that all the documents are managed properly. The greatest thing is, we have cloud-based stuff that everyone has access to. So we have, we have central location for RFIs, Seminoles, PCOs, and then we can track everything, because everyone has access to all the documents. So it's easy to track who's responsible and the required response. Sometimes architects get busy and they don't get the RFIs and Seminoles back on time, so that's where we come in. We play a role in that, just to ding them and say, hey, we're looking for this and it's holding us up on the project. So, budget management is a, a big thing. We know that Bordeaux has your hard costs, but there's soft costs that creep in all the time. With everything going on in the world today, you never know with supply chain and all, if the materials are available when they say they're going to be available. And just because, especially ceramic tile and different things like that, and switch gears, because ceramic tile, just because it's here in their shop today doesn't mean it's there tomorrow. And sometimes if you get some expensive tile, it can be six months out. We just did a job down here in Brunswick County, and they, it was a rest area, and they use marble tile, and it had to come from Italy, and they decided to add some to another bathroom, and it wasn't available for six months. So, just things like that that we track. And then the change management, I oversee all, I'm, wear many hats. I help out with the cost estimating as well, I can do scheduling, I do change order reviews. Schedule management, that's a big thing. We have a great team of folks that's on scheduling. Andrea Dunn, she, she would be part of it that oversees all this, but we keep track of everything's in realistic time and do schedule updates to make sure that the contractor is where he's supposed to be at any given time.
These little dashboards, hope you see that, and you get a monthly report about the SaaS of Bordeaux's schedule, whether the meeting is or not, or what risks you've got coming up.
Quality management, so the QC is on Bordeaux. They have to make sure that their trades are given the, the quality control. We come in as quality assurance to make sure that the contractor's doing what they're supposed to do, and you're getting what you paid for. That's very important. And, and you know, we'll do audits and document monitoring, and make sure that we document all non-conforming work and let you know of it right away. And BIM coordination, that's very important, BIM coordination. We did, I did, I was overseeing a hospital, and no one realized that the doors to access the clean, the filters and everything was right in the way of a stamp pipe. So, BIM coordination is very important, so we, we follow up on things like that.
And you've got that in your book report. One other thing I'd like to mention is the daily reports. Our daily reports are a little more than just what's on ProCore. And ProCore's easy to get to sometimes, once you get used to it, but it's not very helpful if you're not used to playing with it, okay? So, we also produce our own daily reports, we take pictures and photos, and we distribute that daily. It's a daily report, we send that out to you daily, okay? So you can see what's going on, on the job site, and be aware of all the things that's happening. And just kind of keep it in your mind, it's just an interesting thing to see every day.
We do the weather, who's there for the GC, each subcontractor, number of employees, pictures, and details of the pictures. Commissioning, we have a vast commissioning team. I, our commissioning team is just wonderful. We have people that have all kinds of knowledge, have been doing commissioning for years, and commissionings are very important, because you want to make sure that you're building this function as it's supposed to be. That you, you just never know with air handlers and things that you run into, VAV boxes, and so the commissioning part is very important. You need to have your commissioning team onboard at the very beginning of the design, so it makes a difference further on. Pre-function checklist, test and balance, verification, function, performance, and final reports, and tracking issues to get them resolved in time to matter.
Our health been open for two years now, I still follow them on a daily basis. We still have issues with some of the solar systems, they're working, they're recording properly, so it records. They're working fine, but it's just the recording that doesn't work. So we still stay up on top of that and follow them. Just want to make sure that the client's happy with what they give in the project.
Closeout and turnover. Closeout is a big part of any project. You know, they always say, no job's done till the paperwork is complete. And I'm still involved in closing out the job, I was in Brunswick County. We need to make sure that you have all your documentation, and it's all stored together and how you want it. If you want three ring binders, your, your redline drawings is very important, so that the next person, if there's changes and it's not documented, then if you go looking for a wire and you can't find it because no one documented where it was at, underground utilities the same way. And also warranties, warranties are the issue. At the closeout, it needs to come from the contractor's name to yours' name, so that you are getting the warranty that you're supposed to get with the products that you paid for. Stock materials, where you want those to reside at. And then community engagement, this is a big part, we're very much community involved. When you get the, this project, look here, I know folks up here that I've worked with on projects in Brunswick County, they're excited about this school, their kids are going there. So the community's really involved in this already, they're excited about the school, and community involvement gives you a chance to socialize with other trades, architects, contracting firms and all that. So, we care about our community, that's one of MVP's core values.
So why would you select us? You have different firms to choose from in North Carolina, but I don't think you'll find ones any better than we are. Mostly because we do work just for owners.
Yes.
That's all we do. We do claims, we do schedules, we do construction estimating, we do project management. As an owners representative, and we're not a general contractor, we're all BIM, all those kind of things. The other part about it is, we like to bring a collaborative approach to it. We are, our company functions as a team. We, we call each other, we talk each other, we're on Zoom all day long, back and forth. We know what each other's doing, and when somebody needs help, you step in, it doesn't matter who you are, what you are, whether it's Chris Payne or CEO or anybody else, they'll step in and help you. And we know that, and we know everybody's got our backs on projects, so we're very happy with that. We know how to do design build. The two projects that have gotten demo right now are design build projects. They use PPEA, is what they call it, but they are design build. And there are issues with that, that you have to follow up with, and make sure that they're actually doing what they're supposed to do in those contracts, and you're getting your value back. This design build in North Carolina is a little different, the statutes are written a little differently here. Premise is the same, but mostly you have to remember that once they've signed that contract of that GM at Risk, that team becomes like a general contractor. Anything you change is a change, it's money, okay? So you have to be aware that if your budget's already at the cap of where it is, the opportunities for change sometimes has to be enough, and we'll pick it up later. But that's, that's the, that's the information that I'll bring to you for you to make those decisions. And again, we're professionals, we're responsive, we, we understand the role of a board member and the challenges that you have politically and with your constituents that you've got in the area. You have to address all those things, and you have to know that the people that you're trusting to bring you that value are doing what they need to do, so that you can stand up and want to be informed of the project, be able to tell the public what's going on, on the project, because you know what's going on on the project. And then make sure that the, what you're seeing in the project is what you paid for, and the taxpayers are getting what they want. And our, our company motto is, we provide better outcomes. That's the whole, the whole gist of what we do, to provide a better outcome for you. So, thank you.
That's a presentation.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Board, do you have any questions?
I'll ask, I'll ask the one that I asked, same ones I asked the other, other group, if you don't mind. And you've already answered one of them, have you worked with our contractor before, and that was a yes. Have you ever come in mid, I'll call it a mid-project, although we aren't nearly midway through, but have you ever come in like that before?
Yes, on quite a few projects, yes, we have.
Okay.
Two. Two ways it comes in, though. One, we've been asked to come in because something's wrong. Or we've been delivered in because the owner's finding out that they've got too much on their plate, and they can't address everything that's being asked of us. And that's, it falls back on staff of saying, you know, I can be there, but I'm not going to be able to go do this at some other school. And that's their full-time jobs, they're here, existing schools, not so much managing new ones coming down the road.
That's how it was with Stafford County Schools, their project managers, they had too much on their plates, and they called us in to assist.
Thank you. Gentlemen, just one question, how long have the three of you been working together?
Well, listen, I'm the newbie, so I've, I've been with MVP for about two and a half years now, so. Well, listen, I'm the newbie, so I've been with MVP for about two and a half years now, so.
But I've known him, Andy used to be head of the, um, general con, uh, the licensing board for general contractors, okay? So, I'm a GC, he's the head, he's a, he's a three time over inspector too. So, I mean, he knows everything, mechanical, electrical and everything else. Ron, Ron and I have worked.
Ten years, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I've been with the company for 12 years. We've worked together at least 10 years. Uh, my background was, I was a GC as well. Uh, I'm the only one in the company, the city of Charlottesville, all their building inspectors quit and they had me go and do their building inspector, so, I mean, I.
Oh, wow, because I kind of caught a rapport between the three of you guys.
Oh, yeah.
But, um.
Well, that was for that one, yeah.
And I guess, uh, my next question, I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
I was gonna say, we communicate almost daily, so, yes, we do.
And I guess my next question was anything you could an, you could answer. Uh, I guess we'll have to talk to the county commissioners about what we can do to get a casino here in Pender County.
A beach and a casino?
Because I'm seeing, uh, damnful public schools building two schools at, at one time. Three, three?
I got three underway right now. One's a, uh, $90 million renovation of a 2,500 student high school. It was there in 1956, is when it started, okay? So, we're systematically going through the whole campus, renovating the whole campus, brand new, okay? They have a wonderful CTE program, just fantastic. And, um, and it goes all the way up to the community college and into their schools, okay? Um, the other one is a, an old building that was vacated. And Dambler went through some tough times for a long time if you've ever been there. And, and so, they, they're, they're coming back. And so, what they've done is we've taken that one building and, and this was all early programming that we did with them about their schools and how many they had, they have 14 schools, what can you do with them? All that kind of stuff. Um, we took the one school, we've got their, um, their, um, Galileo School is what they call it, okay? So, it's their magnet school, okay? They've got it and part of the building. And then we took one of the wings of the building and we turned it into their new admin offices. So, we renovated part of that wing of the old school building and added a little bit to it for the boardroom uh, because it didn't have a space big enough for a boardroom. And, um, so that's one of their projects. That's about a $40 million project. And then we had another school, they're going to renovate the campus originally, but since they have other projects that they want to do in the future, what we decided to do is to put a new building adjacent to the existing one. It's on the campus, works well, brand new, $40 million elementary school that's there for 936 students. The existing school, we're going to use for swing space for the next years as they're doing renovations and other projects. They'll, they'll go through that school and use that school's swing space. We don't have to make trailers or modulators or anything like that. And it gives them that extra capacity that they have, they get big influx.
Nice, nice.
That's their planning and long-range planning and we're still helping them do their next round of long-range planning.
Well, Dr. Bree Love, I guess we have another agenda item for the next priority one meeting.
I've got a question. So, after this project is over and completed, who trains our wonderful maintenance department to take over this school?
So, we, we use, uh, that's up to the contractor with all these trades. They, that's part of their closeout part is they bring your staff in and they train them on the equipment. So, that's part of their job is to, because they have to have their trades installed, everything. And your commissioning team and all that, bring them in and train them on the equipment that's there.
So, with your commissioning team, they should, the maintenance staff should be with them on a couple of rounds. Just familiarize themselves first with the campus and the equipment. We want to make sure the equipment's not something unique and different that they haven't seen before. And if they have, what is it and how do you fix it? Next is when they're doing the training, videotape it. It's the best thing in the world is to just sit down and say, here, here, you're getting ready to go out to a new school. Um, here's the air handler, this is how it's done. Videotape it and then go out there while the contractor's still there with your maintenance teams on a Friday afternoon or something like that and, and just put your hands on it and see what's there. So, because you don't want them to be scared of it. That's the main thing. They don't want to break anything, they don't want to hurt anything, they don't want to mess anything up because it's brand new. So, give them that confidence that they know what they're doing, they can go do it, they can go do that.
So, I oversaw a $500 million hospital and there's all kinds of equipment stuffed with the hospital. And for the, the last three months of the project, once a week, I, I went around with the maintenance guys and, and the contracting and the commissioning team. And like you said, we videotaped everything and that was a big asset.
One of the, one of the benefits, board, of your current contract with Bordeaux is your extended warranty period. Your extended warranty, your warranty period is typically one year. You have a, uh, two and a half year warranty period that the contractor agreed to, or design build team, sorry. And so, uh, you're, you're going to have a lot more, um, ability beyond that one year. You have an additional year and a half to bring contractors back in if something busts up or breaks or somebody needs a little bit more instruction or there's turnover in mechanical or whatever. So, just be aware.
The biggest thing there, it's a bigger point. Well, it's not mine, it's theirs, it's yours. Um, so you need a referee.
Okay, board, are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
I'll be back in Pender County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, if you could let me know, um, is the next group already out there? Oh, very good, okay, thank you.
Next group presenting this morning is Turner, Townsend and Harry.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you for being early.
Oh, sure, thank you for being early. Will we just say next slide when it's time? Please. Do it this way. Cool, all right. Ready? All right. Um, well, thank you for inviting us here today. We're excited to be here. Um, it's very hot outside, so we're glad to be inside. Um, so, we're going to introduce ourselves and then get into the presentation. Um, we are going to touch on all the topics that were in the interview invitation, just a little bit, maybe different order, um, but they'll all be there, so we'll go ahead and get started. All right. Um, so, my name's Jessica Killian and I'm serving as the project executive for this project. Um, that means that I'll be involved throughout the project, but really in the background. Uh, my primary role is to make sure that Eric and Stacy have the resources they need to be successful for you all. I'll always be available to you if you have any questions or concerns or if you need anything, but your primary points of contact really will be Stacy and Eric. My background in K-12 projects and programs goes back a decade and my experience in project management is nearly twice that. Um, I've worked on multiple large design build K-12 projects and understand the intricacies, intricacies of communication, budget transparency and that delivery method. I think public sector projects are really fun and really enjoy working with all of the stakeholders that public projects bring to the table. I'm really excited to bring this team to you and I look, we look forward to sharing our approach with you a little bit more. Eric?
Thank you, Jessica. Good morning. Um, I'm Eric Allen. Uh, I'll be serving as the project director. Uh, that means I'll be working very closely with you throughout the life of this, this particular project, uh, making sure that communication stays clear, that our processes are efficient and that we remain focused on delivering, uh, a school that the Pender County community can be very proud of. Um, this project is particularly meaningful to me, um, as, uh, I kind of cut my teeth. I started my career right down the street in, uh, New Henry County, uh, back in the late 90s. And, uh, my family is a little north of here from Magnolia, if you guys are familiar, where that is up in Duplin County, right up 117.
James, Bone Crusher Smith lived there.
Yes, he did, yes, he did, so, yep, yep. My dad was a county commissioner back in the, in the late 80s and early 90s. Um, so, anyway, uh, so, this is a bit of a homecoming for me, um, so to speak. So, professionally, I spent about three decades managing, uh, construction programs across the state, including time in Wake County and, uh, finishing up my, um, um, public career working for Chapel Hill Harbor City Schools as their chief operation officer. Um, I kind of made it through, uh, COVID and, uh, that was enough. It took enough out of me that it was time for me to hang that up and, and move over to the private side. Um, all right, so, um, I've led, um, multi-million dollar capital improvement programs. Um, currently, we have one in, um, here in the state in, in Guilford County Schools. Um, and, uh, I specialize in helping districts like yours build with intention, uh, balancing transparency, innovation and long-term value. Um, I'm thrilled to bring that experience back to this region and to partner with you on what I know will be a successful project. Uh, Stacy George and I will be working closely together to serve you throughout this effort. I believe we complement each other, uh, each other's strengths and share the same commitment to hear, um, to give you clear communication, proactive problem solving and keeping your best interests front and center. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Stacy so she can introduce herself.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning, everyone. My name is Stacy George and I have been managing projects in both the private and public sector for, for quite some time now. Um, my career actually started in project management, managing capital projects for the Virgin Islands Department of Education in St. Thomas, Virgin Islands, where I'm originally from, by the way. Um, North Carolina is now my home for almost eight years and I am truly excited to now have the opportunity to manage K through 12 project here in, you know, my new hometown. Um, you know, I have managed projects in the residential hospitality, technology and most recently, financial services industry. And I can tell you that managing projects in the K through 12 industry is, I mean, near and dear to my heart as my work, you know, contributes to the environment that has a direct impact on each student's learning experience. Um, I'm truly happy to be here this morning alongside my team to present before you this morning. And now, I will turn it over to Jessica, who will lead us into today's presentation. Jessica?
All right, so, we first want to discuss what being an owner's representative means to us. For all of us, our role is to be an extension of you and represent your interest in the project. We want to focus on your priorities while the project is focused on construction. Um, our role is to work collaboratively, collaboratively to solve problems and facilitate project success. This means being an integral liaison and active facilitator through transparent and effective communication. Being part of a project this transformative to the way Pender County Schools delivers education is really exciting for us. Also, a big part of we, what we do is to allow you as the board of education and district staff to, the ability to focus on other things, knowing that you are, you have a dedicated and experienced representative focused on this project. One of the primary ways we enable you to refocus is through accurate and consistent reporting and deliverables. In the interview invitation, you indicated two specific reporting needs. Our weekly reports to the superintendent will have current and pertinent information that is updated each week. We will always document any issues occurring with the project, but also provide recommended solutions or resolution. Our goal is to never just throw a problem at the wall and say, hey, what are we going to do? We are always coming to you with solutions. That's our job. For the monthly board of education reports, our focus will be a little more high level and include overviews of budget and schedule. We want you to understand the project status from a variety of ways, um, and a different, a lot of different vantage points and will always be prepared to answer questions. There may also be, be reporting to additional groups such as teachers, students, parents, the county, the community at large. We'll tailor our messaging so it makes sense to those people and is appropriate to the audience and make sure it aligns with district goals. Now, Eric's going to touch on digital tools and document management.
Thank you. All right. So, we don't just manage documents, we manage clarity, accountability and momentum. Um, we're very, um, aware that you, uh, that you've chosen to use ProCore um, as a communication and, and a project management device, documentation tool. Um, and, um, I think I read that you guys also maybe use an Oculus as a, a method that integrates with it as well. So, we're, um, we have a team that, uh, brings a depth of, of experience and we'll ensure that project documentation is timely, organized and aligned with your standards, supporting transparency and accountability, um, all the way through occupancy. So, um, one of the ways that we will, uh, manage your documents is that we will align the documents, um, filing system that meets, uh, Pender County Schools' expectations. Uh, record decisions immediately during meetings and site visits. Uh, follow up diligently on RFIs, PCOs and submittals to prevent delays. Um, and with the digital tools, the, the ProCore and the, um, and Oculus, uh, we're proficient, of course, in, in, in using those. Um, we use digital tools for real-time project tracking, for quality assurance and quality control, um, which will enable stakeholders' visibility and proactive management through dashboards um, and 360-degree site documentation. Um, on, I mentioned earlier that we were, uh, working with Guilford County Schools and we have the ProCore dashboard there, uh, that gives live access to project documentation. So, district leadership, uh, enabling them to quicker approvals and to, uh, provide fewer delays in, in decision-making with RFIs and, and any potential change orders. And now, if I could pass this on, let me go to the next one. All right.
All right, so, at Turner and Townsend Erie, um, our approach to construction oversight is rooted in partnership and accountability. We begin by respecting that the design build firm, um, that is already contracted owns the means and methods. Um, we do not by any means micromanage. Um, we do ensure that the work aligns with the contractor's scope, quality expectations and the overall project goals. So, defined roles and responsibilities are the foundation of our oversight. We clearly communicate expectations and support the contractor in resolving issues efficiently. Our goal is to foster a collaborative environment built on trust or where challenges are addressed collectively and solutions protect the integrity of the project without compromising any relationships of any sort. Um, clear and transparent communication, which is like my favorite, is 90% of what project managers do. And it is the central, it is central to our process and an integral part of our business here at Turner and Townsend Erie. We go beyond just giving status updates. We proactively identify risks, uh, track progress and lead lesson learned discussions. This transparency drives continuous improvement, seamless execution and, and it truly drives project success. We also coordinate owner supplied equipment to ensure it integrates smoothly into the construction timeline. In addition to those reporting deliverables that Jessica mentioned earlier, as the best practice, we will establish regular project meetings on a weekly cadence, um, followed by regular site visits so that we can monitor progress and uphold QAQC, um, standards. You know, working closely with, uh, the GCs, their subs and any other stakeholders and end users, of course. With the help of technology and tools that Eric mentioned, we track real time, which he did mention, real time field observations and use data-driven insights to drive accountability. And lastly, as the project evolves, um, as your partner, we are able to offer a scalable workforce, meaning, you know, we're ready to expand resources as needed to support a project delivery. So, now shifting to the right side of the screen, um, schedule and budget monitoring, this is where our internal, internal horsepower really shines. Um, since the construction is already underway, uh, we will first analyze the existing construction schedule to ensure our activities are actually accurately captured, um, address any gaps in the schedule and make sure that timelines are realistically, um, recorded. We will develop a master schedule that integrates this construction schedule and any other post-construction activities such as your FFNE, um, AV setup, uh, your tech setup, security commissioning, staff training, all the way up to your day one, um, occupancy preparations and ribbon cutting ceremonies. Um, we would leverage the support of our internal scheduler to regularly analyze the critical path to identify delays and opportunities where we can actually compress the schedule, um, throughout the duration of the project. Um, we conduct regular reviews of the schedule and budget, aligning, you know, ensuring alignment with scope and identifying costs, saving opportunities without compromising quality, you know, value engineering. Uh, we maintain a contingency log to track risks and scope changes, prioritizing that by, by impact, cost impact to enable proactive decision-making. Change order requests, uh, those, of course, we will manage on a, on a daily basis, um, and thoroughly review. and thoroughly review pay applications and vendor invoices for accuracy, ensuring fiscally, that we're fiscally responsible throughout the, the life of the project every step of the way. At the end of the day, um, we are reliable, scalable, and flexible. And as your trusted and valued partners, um, we're committed to being good stewards of your investment. Um, and with that, I'll hand it back to Eric, uh, to speak a little bit about commissioning and project closeout. Eric?
All right. So, we treat closeout, uh, not, we, we treat closeout as a, not as a finish line, but as a transition. So, um, in my career, I've found that closeout and commissioning is just as integral to a, a successful project as design is, uh, and project planning is early on. Um, it's very key. And our approach is rooted in communication, schedule, integration, and training, so your team is equipped to operate facilities smoothly on day one and beyond. Um, so with project closeout, um, we, uh, the, the milestones are integrated into the master schedule. We make sure that that, that happens. Uh, consistent communication and tracking of open items, a collaborative approach with contractors and district staff to ensure completion. We work closely with your commissioning agent to keep commissioning integrated and, and valuable, uh, support smooth turnover, um, up at, to operations, including training and documentation, provide expectations for ONMs, um, and ASBILs early on. I've always found to make sure that we include ONMs and ASBILs as being a part of substantial completion. In other words, you're not substantially complete until we have those and they've been approved by the engineers. Coordinate staff training and maximize participation. We're there, and I think your, your schools are currently in, in construction. Um, so we're there to, to help you from, from where you're at as, as far as, uh, construction now, all the way through your warranty period. We can provide you support all the way through, then schedule your 11-month warranty walks, ensure that those items are being taken care of, um, facilitate documentation and resolution of warranty issues with clarity. And with that, pass it back off and, uh, get Jessica to explain to you why you should bring this on.
Thank you. All right. Um, to close out, I hope you've been able to see how much we enjoy the work we do, um, how much experience we have in it, um, and what we want to bring to you all to make sure that we finish this project strong. The team here is who will be representing you to the end. Eric, Stacy, and I are really excited to bring our experience to you. We understand the importance of getting this project right, um, and we look forward to the opportunity to work with you. With that, we turn it back to you for questions and answers. And I'm going to like, take the question and then make sure that we're not all talking on, on top of each other, because I think we probably all have responses, so we'll go from there.
How, how big is your company?
So, here in the North Caroli, in, here in North Carolina, we have 18 people. Um, we have another four that are down in Beaufort County School District. That's the group that's sort of the, the Carolinas Project Management Group. Turner and Townsend Erie, who just does public sector project management, is about 400 people. Turner and Townsend, um, here in the United States is about 8,000. Um, so we've got lots of different variety of people.
I'm going to ask the same questions I asked the other two groups. Have you worked with our contractor before?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
I have, um, multiple times and, and Mosley as well. So, I know, uh, Tom and Blair Bordeaux, um, as well as Ashley Dennis with, and Ashley, Ashley's working on a school for me up in Greensboro right now, actually two schools. So, but I've known them for 15 years, maybe something like that. They did, in fact, Bordeaux did Snipes Academy down in, um, on Chestnut Street down in Wilmington for me back in 2010, I want to say. I think that school came in maybe a million dollars under budget, if I remember correctly. So, it was a $10 million school, so, but yeah, I know both.
So, my other question is, have you, have you come in, I'll call mid-build, and, and helped schools, districts?
I have, I have not. Um, let me change that. I have working for a school district. So, when I went to Chapel Hill, they were mid-construction on Chapel Hill High School. So, I did come in, uh, mid-construction, and unfortunately I had to help right the ship there. But yes, yes, I have come in mid-construction before.
Yeah, and, and I have, um, a few different times. Usually it's when things are like going wrong, um, and so there's a lot of problems to fix. It looks like this one's, you know, going okay. Um, and, and Stacy mentioned it really well, like, our biggest thing day one and month one is to really figure out what's going on and make sure we understand. Our job is not to like show up and be like, hey, we're the owner's rep, you know, do it our way. We want to make sure that we're integrating into the processes that are happening, but also understanding if there are gaps, if there are concerns, and making sure we bring those to light. Um, so there's going to be some, some research, some fact-finding, you know, good meetings, um, and then, and then figuring out where we can start making things move more smoothly, um, you know, control the contingency log, that sort of stuff. Um, so it's a, it, you know, we thankfully have the relationships already with knowing who the people are, um, but we still need to make sure that we understand all the project intricacies of it, especially in design-built, um, because the contract's just a little bit different that way.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
I have any questions? Your presentation was well done, by the way.
Thank you.
And, uh, Ms. George, I'm assuming it would probably be you who would be visiting our site.
Yes.
Um, do, are you in fairly close proximity to the site? Do you live pretty close?
Yeah, um, actually I'm an hour and 45 minutes away, which is like, we're in the Raleigh area, so, I mean, I'm next door.
Okay. All right. Well, um, that was the end of my questions. Sounds like the board has concluded their questions, so, uh, thank you very much for your presentation today.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Talking about, you know, just our team coming in and just picking up where you guys are and just making sure that we continue business. What are your concerns? What keeps you up at night? We would love to hear that.
I think, uh, budget and scheduling and, um, obviously, um, we are, I mean, I'll, I'll just be very blunt. We have, um, we are currently looking for, uh, a new operations, uh, chief operations officer, and we, um, we know that we need representation on the site.
Yes.
But, and that's not, um, that's not saying that we have not so far had a very good relationship with Mosley and Bordeaux. We have, but we just felt that we also needed to be boots on the ground out at our site also, and I think that this is probably, as far as the board is concerned, the most responsible thing that we could do.
Like, I kind of mentioned it in my, um, one of the things I said, but like, we love what we do. You guys have other jobs as well. You love what you do. I would never be on the Board of Education, but I would love to represent you on the construction site. So, it's, it's just understanding that responsibility, like, and, and staff as well, you know, not having a, uh, director of operations, but, you know, Bill's got other jobs. Like, there, there's just a lot going on at a school district, so we always are fans of third parties. It's just, projects don't come along all the time.
Indeed, and we just did not feel it would be very fair to someone who was coming in as our new COO to also say, hey, guess what? We're building a very large K8 school over in Hampstead, so, uh, but that's kind of where we were too. But, um, again, um, do, do you have any more questions?
No, I appreciate the response.
No.
And just to kind of add to, um, um, what Stacy was saying earlier, we are in a position that we can have staff on-site as much as you ask them to be on-site. So, it's not that, you know, because she's an hour or so away that she won't be there, you know, once every so often. I mean, they can be, we can have somebody there as much as you want them there. So, it's all about you telling us what, what pain level you have as far as, as having a staff member for us to represent you. And we can help with training some of your staff, if you have some staff, we provide that kind of leadership as well, so to help them grow. But I, because I've, I've been there when you, you have the, the, the person that's over operations being the, because I was him, that has to also have to be the project manager, um, for the site, as well as run transportation and food services and everything else that comes with operations, so.
Yes, sir. Well, uh, thank you all very much. We appreciate you coming to, uh, present today.
Thank you.
Okay, board, that concludes our, um, information agenda today, and right now we are at number five on the agenda, closed session. Does anyone have the closed session statement they would like to read?
Yep. I will make that motion as Mr. McPherson will read it.
I'm trying to turn my mic on, Don. Hold on. Thank you. I move to the board to enter into closed session, subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318,11A1 and A6, to preserve, print the disclosure of confidential personnel information under 115C 319, and to consider matters related to personnel matters.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, we are now in closed session. Thank you. We are now in closed session.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Do we have a second?
Second, Jennifer Hansen.
Thank you. We, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are out of closed session. At this time, we need and we need to amend the agenda to include an action, an action item for the superintendent's contract. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Oh, and this would be to replace 6.3. This item would become 6.3. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Okay, at this time, we are going to go to 6.1 personnel report. Do we have a motion to approve the HR report?
Jennifer Hansen, motion to approve the HR report?
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. And motion passes. 6.2 JH Lee project manager selection. Board is, are there any questions or anything or any discussion that we would like to have about experience or any of that, anything that might have impressed you with one of our RFP participants over the other?
I'm sure they're probably listening to figure it out, but I just want to say thanks to all three of them for coming today and they gave very nice professional presentations.
Indeed. Okay. Well, at any time, we will take a motion for, to approve one of those three that were up here today.
Can you list them for us again?
And I left all of my, I know, the Cummings, Coming group.
I know, I want to get them.
BMP.
MBP.
Sorry. Okay, MBP and Turner and Townsend, Harry.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion that we approve MBP to be our contractor for this job.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. We will be working with MBP. Okay, at this time, we are going to have a motion. Thank you, sir. Let's see, we are going to have a motion for the superintendent's contract extension. Mr. McPherson, could you help us with that?
Absolutely. Board, good afternoon. The proposed amendment to the superintendent contract would extend the superintendent's contract to June 30, 2029. And it would also move him from the classified salary supplement schedule to the certified salary supplement schedule where he should be because he is a certified employee holding multiple licenses. So that is just that amendment was sent to you in advance. So if you have any questions about the amendment, feel free to ask those at this time.
Okay, board members, are there any questions?
I have no questions.
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent contract extension.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is approved. I believe we have come to the end of our meeting and thank you everyone for participating and this meeting is adjourned.